A little bit salt and pepper. So we just put the, oh, and then tomatoes sliced on top and you just stick it under the broiler for a few minutes. Nice little vegan meal. Alyssa inspires me to eat better.
Alyssa.
For the record, I don't eat good. Let's just get that out of the way right now. I just told you the animal stuff. But I don't eat good.
That is my daughter. She is a, she's a, she's been a vegetarian on her own since she was three years old.
Oh, wow.
I mean, really, we're, I mean, my favorite meal in the world is file. Sorry, Alyssa. Sorry, Amy, but she.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. I'm a pescatarian, but.
She took one to the farm and that was it. She was like. It is, you know.
I try. I'm a struggling pescatarian. Fish.
Oh, you'll eat fish, okay.
Like a vegetarian, but I eat fish. So, but I have a weakness for bacon. And cheese.
There's a lot of really good cheese out there. That's the thing about, like, do you miss cheese, Alyssa? Come on.
Uh, sometimes, but I really, I mean, I eat junk food, so it's, it is what it is.
Cheese is better than junk food. I mean, cheese is. But I get it. Like, I mean, if you're gonna, you know, you have to.
I'm just entertained that Facebook went live in the middle of that recipe. So now all of Facebook knows about your recipe.
Yeah.
Amy.
Well, if they missed any, send me a message. I'll share it with you. It was delicious. And it took a whole seven minutes to prep and button and make, so.
Okay, we ready? Uh, like to call to order the September eighth, two thousand twenty city council meeting. Welcome please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey.
Here.
Councilmember LaFiora.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Okay, it takes us down to the approval of the revised agenda. I get an approval, please. A move approval of the agenda is presented.
Second.
Any discussion, discussion?
I have discussion. Discussion on the consent agenda. Amy, did you have something to?
Oh, no, they said for revised agenda, um.
Or revised agenda.
They handed me another piece of paper. I thought it was revised.
That's why it says it presented.
Okay, so not revised agenda.
All right, the original agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I didn't get it revised, so just checking. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted discussion on number nine on the consent agenda.
Okay, when we get done here, we'll have some discussion.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, it takes us to, we have an approval of the agenda. Takes it to special presentations, National Recovery Month, September twenty twenty. All right. Whereas substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And whereas according to S A M H S A Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, in twenty eighteen, approximately twenty point three million people aged twelve or older had an abuse substance use disorder. And whereas we will continue to educate and raise awareness of risk of potential harm associated with prescription drugs misuse. And whereas we believe every facing substance use disorders stereotypes associated with the substance often keep people from seeking treatment. And whereas substance use disorders occur the quickly in functionality significant impairment such as health problems ability and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or at home. And whereas substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in the community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their ability to live, work, learn, and fully participate in society enriched with culture and community. Now therefore be resolved in the city of Hazel Park hereby recognizes September twenty twenty as recovery month. We call upon our citizen awareness and understanding of substance use and the need for services to promote recovery.
Suicide prevention. Proclamation declaring September two thousand twenty a suicide prevention month in the city of Hazel Park. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness around suicide prevention resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September tenth. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the CDC, more than forty eight thousand people die each year by suicide. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for people ten to thirty four years of age. A fourth leading cause among people thirty five to fifty four years of age. And the eighth leading cause among people fifty five to sixty four years of age. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health and the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, eight hundred two seven three talk, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas each member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, everyone needs the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And now therefore be resolved that the city of Hazel Park hereby recognizes September two thousand twenty as suicide prevention month. We call upon our citizens and organizations to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for services to assist individuals in crisis.
Thank you, sir. Like to move on down to our civic announcements. Anyone having any civic announcements for the public? No one's city council? And no one that moves as we close civic announcements. It takes us down to public discussion. I like opening up for public discussion. Jesse Robertson.
Hello, Jesse Robertson, two three three five three Hoover Avenue. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else on this call as well as those watching. Tonight I have come before you as a member of the Hazel Park Historical Commission to provide some insight. At last month's meeting, our city manager, Ed Klobuchar, gave a recommendation to reinstate Candace Dean of the Historical Commission. This was responded to after some, after some interruption by a well-attentioned attempt by one member of council to appoint her to the Historical Commission, which was followed by further confusion and the motion failed after a failure to receive a second. After that failure, councilmember Amy Aubrey stated that this was her first time hearing of this and that she was not comfortable supporting something she was unprepared for. Um, this made it clear that there were been some things that the council was unaware of and perhaps should have known. So I would like to take a chance to explain about Candace Dean. Candace Dean is a Realtor whose history in Hazel Park spans back quite a long time, over two decades. She's actually a graduate of Hazel Park Public Schools from the high school here. The very same district as well that she actually has both of her daughters enrolled in right now. She has been a tireless volunteer with the city for at least a decade. Working, for instance, with the Neighborhood Watch, and she is a currently a fellow Historical Commissioner and was actually even appointed there before I was in two thousand eighteen. However, as of right now, she is considered a suspended member of the Historical Commission. In spite of the fact that the exact wording given in councilmember Amy Aubrey's motion at the January twenty eighth city council meeting was to suspend all activities of the Hazel Park Historical Commission pending investigation. Motion that was actually made at the July fourteenth city council meeting was to lift the suspension of and specifying five members of the commission, including myself. While there was justification, there was no justification or explanation given as to why the suspensions were now considered on individual commissioners. In spite of the original motion being a suspension of activities of the commission, the explanation forgiven for why Commissioners Candace Dean and Bethany Holland were excluded from the city manager's recommendation hinged entirely upon their absence from a prior meeting with him. Neither commissioner was able to make that meeting. And while administration has, has at one point also demonstrated that a member's inability to make a meeting as cause to move the date to that meeting, which we saw demonstrated by the delay of the first post-suspension meeting of the Historical Commission in July, having been rescheduled into August eventually. Instead, the situation or inability to make a meeting was caused to leave them suspended indefinitely. A suspension that, as I understand, Candace Dean actually had to be informed about by her fellow commissioners. As the administration had neglected to actually send her a letter of correspondence informing her of the suspension. Such treatment is a bit of a disgrace to someone who has worked hard and given her hometown all that she could. In light of this, I do call upon the city council to lift the suspensions of both Candace Dean and Bethany Holland. Neither have been cited for any further valid reason why they are harmful or dangerous to the city. And no investigation, as originally cited in this original suspension, has ever reported anything to indicate that these two commissioners are suspect or guilty in any way in which the other eight of us are not. This city's volunteers are at the very heart of why great things are happening in the city of Hazel Park. They are the absolute lifeblood of the city. Without them, Hazel Park would just simply be another dull, faceless suburb of Detroit. I do trust in the city council to demonstrate its faith and show that it puts stock in its volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else from the public where we speak? And that closes public discussion. That moves us down to the seven agenda. Any motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support, support.
There was some discussion that was.
With discussion.
Where I'm going.
Yeah, this favorite discussion on number nine.
Go ahead, Alyssa.
Um, I just wanted to ask if in that purchase of election equipment, in that budget, there was space made for signage for the election and the ballot boxes because I know at the election in August, we had a number of people that were saying they had a difficult time finding the ballot box. I know we've discussed moving the trash receptacle that was in front of that at City Hall, but now we're gonna have a second ballot box, and I'm also wondering about better and more signage for the actual voting precincts. Because I know they've been the same for a long time, but there are new people that have moved to the city and making it easier for those people to find those voting areas is obviously our biggest goal.
Want to take that?
Thank you.
Yeah, Jimmy, did you want to take that? Come over here and find a microphone.
Thank you. All right, um, to address your questions, in that budget specifically, there is not signage, but we're actually, we have a way to address our primary signage issue that two people had on Election Day in August, which was at the high school. They were unaware that the voting is at the back of the high school, so we actually have a free solution to provide signage at the front directing people to the back of that. Every precinct does have those two sandwich board signs, and that has historically been enough except for precinct five, so we're addressing that. The, the ballot boxes themselves, the new one, whether that is funded entirely through grants or whether we purchase that, that will be at the rec center and we will paint that. So it will actually be painted with very, very clear lettering describing what that is. The one by City Hall does say ballots on it. I suppose we can try to increase the signage for that around election time so that it's even more noticeable for individuals.
That would be great. I know, um, Ed and I had spoken about the potential of getting that ballot box or the drop box, rather. It's not just for ballots. For anybody listening and watching, it's also the area, it's the same box that you drop your utility payments, your water bills, and parking tickets. It's the same box for all of it. And I know that that sometimes is confusing because we kind of get single focus on things, but the same drop box is for all of those things. So I just want that to be really clear. And I know that, um, the city, uh, city manager Ed and I had spoken about possibly getting that repainted and making it more, um, kind of obvious and a little bit more apparent as to what it's actually for. But I really appreciate that, James, because I know that, I know that we had a couple of people, and even if it's two people, it still is enough to, you know, warrant putting a little extra effort on signage. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it up. I also had a question about maybe painting the box as a bright yellow zone marking color so people can see it. Something very vibrant.
We can paint it, I suppose, whatever colors.
Whatever color, I mean, but something vibrant enough where you can get people's attention. Alyssa has a great topic there to get people's attention to put up the, you know, for that.
We'll, um, focus on like very high visibility options for the new one. I don't know, um, exactly what would be for the existing one. For new one, we can do whatever.
And to address the signage, I don't know how the construction is going to affect precinct one. Getting it out there. I know they're gonna be done with the bridge soon, but it's still gonna be working on the service drive. I'd like to see some additional signage. I think that we need to maybe reinvest in our signage.
But we, we have had those nice sandwich signs with white letters and the blue background for, I don't know, probably at least fifty years. So, and, and they've served us well. They've been great signs. We can probably see if we can do a little more signage. I'll speak.
Do some twenty first century.
It's a sign, but it's, yeah, right.
They do a great job.
As far as them out there, expensive, just so we know, um, because I checked with Tom. And in terms of new signage, we can, we can certainly do that. I had kind of just shied away from it because of the cost, but we can, we can do signage.
We could do a little bit this time and do maybe a little bit more than in a couple of years.
I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but you're more concerned about the fact that
People getting to.
There may be some alternative routes that people need to take to get to a couple of different polling places. And I think that is the, you know, tabernacled is probably the most critical where we might.
At this, at this time, yes. And, and again, you know, not everybody knows where every precinct is either, so.
And, uh, well, again, and I announced this with great hesitation, intrepidation, and it is by no means a guarantee, but, uh, the state contractors are calling us at the target date to open the bridge across John R. September eleventh. So again, they haven't hit their marks, uh, very much this construction season. But we're hopeful.
We'll see. Well, thank you for your comments.
I have, sure. I was just, I was wondering if we know that that box is actually a box that we can drive up to?
Um, yes, in fact, it has the dimensions in there, so I think it's about.
James, is it also ADA compliant?
I, I'm not sure if it's ADA compliant.
Forty eight inches, forty nine inches.
It's actually very similar to like UPS drop boxes. If anyone's used those, I think it's actually proper to just name it that box. All right, that's the most.
Again, we've, we got it. We're putting it at the rec center because the rec center is really the only place that we could put the drive-through box and hopefully it can be secured over there. There's no, really, way to do it here on City Hall grounds if the traffic will just isn't conducive to putting a ballot drive-up box in.
All right, uh, Amy?
Uh, I'd also just like to make sure that we do a good job getting the word out that we are adding the second ballot drop box, that it does have a drive-through option. So we have some time to, to work on some social media, make sure it ends up in the newsletter and get the word out there, spread the word. Because as, as was in Clerk Finkley's report, it was a two hundred and seventy five percent increase in AV voters just for the primary, which is humongous. So, and now with the problems we're having with, uh, and the uncertainty around postal delivery, we want to encourage more people to just use that drop box if they are physically able to return their ballots instead of mailing them to help make sure they get turned in and their votes get counted. So this is a great opportunity to just work on some social media campaigns, get the word out. I'm sure people will really appreciate that. I personally had mine delivered to, directly to the clerk's office. But it's also just as easy to, to drop it off at a drive-through box on my way home from the grocery store. So I think people will really appreciate that, but they have to know that it's an opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we have a motion, we have approval, any more discussion on consent agenda, any other items? Hearing none, that closes the consent agenda administrative reports. Item one. Mr. Klobuchar.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have Melissa Schwartz and Jeff Campbell here. If you desire any additional information on this, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend chapter five point zero four, commercial marijuana facilities. This is the second reading and the administration recognized the quote.
Do you have a motion on the table?
Uh, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve uh, ordinance to amend chapter, I'm reading it, five point oh four, commercial marijuana facilities on the second reading.
The board. Any more discussion, the session? Motion passes. Item two. Mr. Klobuchar.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Amanda Mason, I believe, is on. If you have any additional questions on this. This one is an ordinance to this is it, to protect our seal and various logos and things like that from misuse. So, uh, we have a new logo that's under discussion, and we also have our existing city seal. Uh, in the past, we have had businesses unfortunately appropriate that seal. We want to make sure that seal is protected and we want to make sure that our new logos are protected as well. So Amanda Mason is here, she can address this, but this is an ordinance to amend Title V, Business Licenses Regulation, adding chapter five point zero seven entitled Use of City Seal and Flag. And that encompasses various logos and representations of the city of Hazel Park.
Amanda, you have anything to add?
No, Ed, really, city manager Klobuchar summed it up really nicely. This is modeled after the Inharbor ordinance. Uh, they have a similar one. It's, we opted to have it be the civil versus the misdemeanor, so.
Thank you. A motion to approve, council?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the amendment five, adding chapters five point zero seven, uh, use of the city seal and flag.
I'll support.
And we have a support from Alyssa. Any discussion, the session, motion passes. Administrator reports item three, emergency ordinance adding chapter four five point four four, short-term license. Mr. Klobuchar.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Melissa Schwartz is here. She may wish to address this one. This one is to deal with the issue of short-term rentals. As you know, uh, we have had several issues with, uh, very short-term rentals in the past uh, few months in the city of Hazel Park. Members of council have requested action be taken. The attorney Melissa Schwartz has drafted this ordinance, and I will turn it over to her for additional explanation.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In order to address our problem, I look to areas where there will often be individuals renting to a short-term basis. So that took us to some of our lake towns. This ordinance has been modeled after the Lovington ordinance. They were having a lot of issues out there. There was a lawsuit that was filed against Lake Town, but not Lovington. And, um, the city did not prevail because they were requiring the landlords to report to the city every name, address of the person who was coming for the short-term rental. So the, um, the ruling was that you can regulate, but you can't have that kind of duty to report. So Lovington kind of married all of this together. And so what we need to do is we need to look at the limiting of the number. Marrying it with the zoning job is wonderful to take a look at that and, and kind of combine with that. And in addition, to have the landlords of these homes have to register themselves for accountability with the city clerk. Also, there was a lot of concern from council and the administration as to the condition of the home with having such a high turnover of individuals as well. So there will be a heightened requirement for inspection instead of a kind to a landlord or a long-term rental, these are going to be on a, on a shorter basis for inspection to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. In addition, with the limit of the numbers within the city and combining with the zoning considerations, hopefully this will be able to eliminate individuals from just buying up homes for this purpose and trying to usurp the safety mechanisms that are well ingrained in all municipalities, townships, in villages in state Michigan. So we modeled after Lovington, we thank the people of Lovington for this good work. And, uh, and that's where this was leading from marrying with the recent case law.
This is Jeff Campbell. Just so you know, uh, it took, it took Lovington about a year to come up to this, although it's well bought.
My, I have one question on this. If anybody else doesn't have a question. Amy, you got a question, go ahead.
Me too.
Um, so I have two questions. Uh, one is what is our plan to inform potential owners, um, that this ordinance is now going to be in place? So that they follow the ordinance? And the second question is what is our plan for enforcement of this ordinance?
Okay, number one is to notice. Um, the notice is going to be that it's going to be published as it needs to be. In addition, the notice is also going to be that it's on the ordinance website. So you're going to publication and it's going to be with the other ordinance with the website. So that's deemed proper legal notice.
Where is it going to be published? Because I know we can meet the bare minimum legal requirements, but we also want to make sure that people see it, because where we typically publish our legal notices, the average person isn't looking at that while they're drinking their morning coffee. So I just want to know, the, the plan is to really get this out into the community to make sure that they see it.
Well, the requirement under the laws that we publish in our local newspaper, and most people are not reading the newspapers these days, but they do have online presence, um, with the newspaper as well. And so right now, to comply with the legal requirements, we do have to publish within our local newspaper.
Which local newspaper are we using?
C and G.
Either C and G or.
C and G or the other, you usually C and G.
We could put it on the website and wherever we need to. I think we'd also be looking up frankly, anyone who's got a registered Airbnb or other, you know, something listed in Hazel Park sending a letter saying you've got to comply, you got to stop immediately and comply. That'd be the first action of notification and some, and then thereafter enforcement. And then if they fail to comply, they'll get their misdemeanor ticket that they will, and we'll take normal protocol that we would always take, um, and then take emergency actions, uh, if there's any evidence, obviously. Endangered the public health and safety as well.
So this reported to code enforcement? If somebody, okay, so, so any residents that have any concerns can reach out to code enforcement. I just want to just reiterate again, I know we're meeting the minimum legal requirements, but the minimum legal requirements is, is not your everyday person.
Previous council order to publish those, we haven't, it hasn't come in, it hasn't happened yet. This will be the first instance, but to publish those things on the website via social media and then maybe other things. I'm going to have to work up the order, but there already is an order in place by the council at a previous meeting to do additional publications for notices, so.
Yeah, I didn't hear those. I wanted to make sure that we've got those, and obviously we've got the newsletter that goes out every Friday. That's a great opportunity as well.
You know, another idea maybe too, that we can put a copy of this with each landlord license.
That would be, that would be amazing. That, that's actually, I would prefer that. Do we need a motion for that?
Sorry.
Do I need to make a motion or are we just gonna do it? Do I need to make a motion or are we just going to do it? Nobody's answering me. I said, do we need a motion for that? Are we just going to do it?
I want, I want, yeah, we're getting together how a form would be for this, we don't exactly have that all straightened out, obviously, we're going to. Sort of from a timing perspective, it won't be under the same timing of the landlord, like either.
Renters aren't allowed to get the Airbnb license, the short term license rental anyway.
Melissa, you got a question?
Yeah, so I actually went over this. This emergency ordinance with a fine tooth comb because I took the opportunity to reach out, I have some friends that exclusively. Their business while they're in school is Airbnb. And they don't live in Michigan, they do live in California, San Bernardino. And San Bernardino has a much more strict kind of overview because they do have some protective species, some. They're known as a. Well, they have Joshua trees, which are protected species on much of their, much of their properties there, but they also are a stargazing community. And that's part of the draw is the stargazing kind of darkness, so they have more restrictions, more requirements there and their real. Big goal was to prevent parties, which I know is part of our issue as well. And they had some great, they had some great points that they made to me and then I did reach out to a contact directly there and I'm asking for. Their ordinance as well, but they, they have some great things. No more than eight total people, no matter the number of rooms. This, ours is ten.
Ours is ten, so it's limited to four bedroom and then plus two additional guests with a cap at ten, which is different from Luddington, we added that.
That's good. And then they were having quiet hours like wedding venues. They also required in some areas that a second dwelling, the. Both cannot be rented at the same time, but also in part of the areas they were doing, that the owner of the property could only rent for an a hundred and eighty days. Total as a short term rental, which is another option. Okay, good.
Yeah, which is, and that was not from Luddington as well, that was from Gran Haven, I think, but it was ninety.
I really, I think there's a, I think these are great options and I really like the work that you guys.
Hours as well, which are akin to the business hours, Jeff worked with building code on that. And ours are really, it's like eight PM to seven AM if I recall. The quiet, we have quiet hours as well, there's no activities, commercial activities at all, no garage sales, none of that, no weddings, no. I think we called it a discotheque or something, but no parties whatsoever. You can't do fireworks unless you are the owner of the home. Even if you could lawfully shoot off fireworks, only the owner of, if the owner is there, can fireworks lawfully be set off to limit all of that.
I like it, I like it a lot.
I think we've all read this and it's very comprehensible and it it's just going to serve the purpose for the emergency at this point. If we can make some changes in the next couple of months here, since we don't need a second reading on this, because we have some cases that be pending on this. I think we could go ahead and pass it and move forward. And we can revisit this in thirty ninety days and come back with any more suggestions if you'd like.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the discussion that we had, I just, I really, it was really important to me, yeah, so thank you so much again for all your hard work on it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for both of you. Any, any other questions real quick, I mean, anything that's on here?
Just a big thank you to Amanda, Melissa, Jeff and the great work that our real team does all the time.
Did a good job. Might be a couple of tweaks.
I would also like the public to know that we're not like anti Airbnb, we're not trying to do anything like that. That this is just to take care of some, some issues that have come up. I'm not sure if everybody in the city obviously doesn't know that, but. Just, just so that they know, like, we're, we're.
We just want to make sure that things operate smoothly and in no way dilute areas to the. Peaceful, the peaceful good order of our neighborhoods.
Peace and morals within our communities and.
The Luddington and ours is based off the premise that it's an experiment and like in terms of it's a pilot program because it hasn't been regular and so. People may find like, for example, if there are good things going on, that maybe the ninety day thing changes or different things, so it's open to. Modification, that's what the Luddington plan. By having it be a one year, they have a sunset and it's a, it's a pilot program, they have different challenges being such a highly regulated area, different from. Down here being vacation, but it's anticipated that it'll develop and grow as council and the city's needs. Adapt to that, making sure that peace and welfare of the residents are primary.
We can make alterations to it as we.
Right.
We need a motion to pass.
I'll make a motion to pass the emergency ordinance adding chapter five point four four, short term rental licensing.
Support.
Okay, we've had discussion, dissension. Motion passes. Like to recognize Colleen Zach, County Commissioner, she'd like to speak, go right ahead.
Thank you for recognizing me. I appreciate, good evening, everybody. Good, thank you, and how are you?
We're all doing very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I continue to have a very active, busy job as commissioner. And I'm grateful to be there serving during this crazy time in our life. I do want to remind all of the residents that we are offering. More grants through the county, spending the two hundred nineteen. Dollars that the federal government gave the county for ca- cares expenses. And we welcome more. Invoices from the city for your expenses. Last week, we appropriated twenty million, twenty eight million dollars to help school systems start up. And this has been a very hot topic of, you know, making sure that our students are safe. There's been a variety of different learning opportunities, some schools are virtual, some are combined, some are not, you know, are live. So the county is trying to help school systems address their unique needs. And school systems are encouraged to submit invoices for expenses, there will be, there is a formula. Based in how much funding comes to the school system. We also did fund sixty something, I think, sixty eight public health nurses. There has been a public health nurse assigned to Hazel Park Schools, all of the district. And their goal is to get the buildings to help the staff. The buildings, the students prepare to return in a safe manner. They are, these public health nurses are the liaison into Oakland County Health Department. We did publish a very fine tool, toolkit for students in schools. To educate people how to prepare, how to stay safe and so forth. Want to remind everybody, there's veteran grants. Out there for veterans. We still have housing assistance, utility assistance. This is all found at. And you go into grants and you'll see all of the open grants. We also still have funding for small businesses. And even if you receive some county funding before, I don't want people to feel confused, there's been so many grant opportunities. This is county funded grants, they're not loans, this is free money to small businesses. And even if you received money in one of the earlier rounds. You could be eligible to get up to ten thousand dollars. So if you were funded for twenty five hundred, I would still encourage you to apply. And see if you are eligible for more funding. We also have funded some manufacturing companies that are making personal performance equipment. All around COVID. Last week, I am the Chair of Finance and Infrastructure, we are in the process of. Wrapping up our budget, the Oakland County budget starts October one. I do want to assure residents that we will have a very fiscally responsible. Balanced budget moving forward as we do now and and it's a very sound budget. That I feel good about. I do want to talk a little bit about the Oakland County Parks Village. On the November ballot, there will be the renewal of the Parks Village. And we are asking for an increase. And I know this is a very vulnerable time for citizens and I hate asking anybody for more money. But for the first time ever, I've seen. A very responsible budget from the parks. They have looked at all of their properties, done an assessment, looked at what. Most of the properties they can't sell. Looked at what it actually costs to maintain all of the green space and properties. And also invest in the infrastructure. And clearly, we have gotten more resources on this end of town. You know, I toured the Catalpa Oaks, we have more recreational programs. There's some partnership money that's hap- you know, that is happening. So I feel we're getting more of our fair share. I also know particularly during COVID, we did close down the water park. But people are using the parks more, I know I am, you know, I want to get out, so. I've visited more parks than I have normally, because this is something that I can do. And I really truly appreciate the green space more than ever. So it's a difficult ask for any increase, previously, it's been point two five mil, mils. And the ask is going to be point three five mil for. The parks and we can talk more about it and I welcome comments and feedback from all of you and residents. So. That's just a quick overview, there's tons happening, you know, there's testing available continuously from Oakland County Health Department. We did expand that to offer services to children, school age children aged four and up. And to schedule the testing, you call the nurse on, on call. And testing's available Monday and Wednesday at the Oakland County Health Department location in Southfield. Which is at Greenfield and eleven and a half mile, which is Catalpa. Any questions?
Thank you for helping us. Thank you, all the work you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Zach for her assistance in obtaining the county funds to help us repair. Woodward Heights, who are probably doing milk repairs in the spring. The advice of our engineers because we want to make sure we can get a better price, right now, roads are at a premium. But again, I want to thank her for all of our efforts, for all of her efforts on this. This local road improvement funding program has been a godsend of the city of Hazel Park and we're grateful that the county is participating and I thank her for her leadership. And getting that program off track.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thanks, Colleen, nice seeing you every time.
Good seeing you.
Boards and commissions, council, any boards and commissions do we want to talk about?
I would like to have a bit of discussion on boards and commissions. Okay, I had a lovely conversation earlier today with James Finkley, the city clerk. And I would really like to work on a policy for boards and commissions to have contact info for. Every serving member of a boarding commission, an email, a phone number, an address. Those don't need to be made public, but we do need access to contact people. And this goes into Jesse's public comment from earlier, so I spent today. Over forty five minutes trying to find contact information for Candace Dean. There is not an email address listed for her anywhere, there is not a phone number listed for her anywhere. Amy, myself and Amy have been trying to reach out to her because now with Jesse speaking, this is now the fourth person who has spoken. For Candace, on behalf of Candace, but none of us have heard from Candace herself. I would like to speak to Candace directly, instead of having other people and other commissioners speaking for her. But I'm unable to get a hold of her, I'm unable to contact her and I'm not going to just. Send out a, a letter, like I don't, I don't actually have access to her address, nor would I feel that's appropriate. As her council member, I would like to just be able to send an email or, or, you know, try to fall, try to call somebody on their phone number. So I would like to, what was that?
I, I think that you have a great point, I think maybe we have Mr. Finkley after the elections. Go around and get all new emails and phone numbers for all of our commissioners and that they have to keep up to date by the year.
Yes, absolutely. Another thing is. Well, not yet, but I'm, I'm also going through this a little bit more. I also know that there had been the concerns raised during the historical commission about people being uncomfortable giving their personal email addresses, which is fine. But you can create a free email account on Gmail, but also the city can assist you with setting up. An, an email account and how to forward it to your personal email, if you don't want to give out your personal email, which I understand. And again, I want to make sure that people understand also, this is for communication within the city, within the administration, this is not for public content, we're not going to be listing people's. Personal phone numbers or email addresses, but we do need to have contact information for these members. For instance, like this, I'm trying to reach a member who has had four people say that she wants to be reappointed, but she hasn't said it to us. Herself, so I don't have any way to verify that or have any way to contact her about this, this issue, so I, I would love to make a motion.
We at least need a phone number, correct?
Yeah, at least a phone number, at least. But I do feel that email is a much more professional way and a little bit easier way to monitor and also keep track of who has been notified of things. And that could be part of the reason why some of these members haven't been notified of, of meetings in the past, because there's no contact information for them. Which is, you know, that's really, that's, that's shortening the ability of these boards and commissions to do their job and also our employees. So I would like to make a motion for a policy to be put into place to collect contact, current contact information, email, phone number and address of all. Active boards and commissions, members, please.
I'll support.
Any more discussion?
Should, before we do that though, shouldn't we say something like on a yearly basis that it's updated or? Can we include that in the, the motion?
Well, I'm asking for just a policy to be developed and then we can go over that, I would guess. But that's all right.
We should put the ownership on the individual who's on the board of the commission, if there is a change or anything like that, to report that to.
That hasn't, that hasn't worked in the past, so I think if we make it mandatory to do it yearly, it's, it keeps our records straight.
Yeah, but I mean, mandatory for them to do it should be that they.
Let's get, let's get something. Let's let James do his magic over there and bring us something the next thirty days, I'll bet James.
Well, I'd like to. Give him just a little more time than that. So let's get that before, before the end of this calendar year here, we'll bring you something, again. Ideally, we have an application that's filled out, or else we already have an application from them for some other border commission, so we have their contact information. Sometimes in the past, council people have just said, well, I want to appoint so and so, and if you guys appoint to prove it, then the administration. We go with it because you guys are the five sovereign people, so ideally, we should have contact information to everyone. And it should, the owner should be on the commissioner if their contact information changes to inform us.
So, Mayor?
Sure.
In the cases where we do appoint somebody and we haven't previously received a completed board or commission application. At that point in time, before clerk sends out the, the notice, he could say, hey. You've, you've been appointed, can you please fill out this form and collect that, so there's, there's answers for all of this, so I'm looking forward to.
But you theoretically, you're supposed to come to the clerk's office and get sworn in. Or sometimes we will send the clerk to a different board meeting to swear them in, but again, that's an opportunity as well. For them to be asked, hey, can you fill out this form with your contact information on it, so we know how to get a hold of.
Right, they should not be appointed unless they know that they have to provide that information, they must provide.
Here, here's the other thing, Mr. Finkley can come up with a plan, that's that Mr. Finkley do his job. He will be, he'll come up with something and come back to us and if we have any questions that might, we can curtail it. So good.
I think that's great, thank you guys so much. Thank you, and then just one other, while we're still talking on boards and commissions, I just wanted to address the meeting that was originally scheduled. By the historical. the meeting that was originally um, scheduled by the historical commission was not postponed because people could not make it. It was postponed because the new members had not been sworn in yet. And they were trying to elect um, new uh, new seats, new um, officers. So that, that meeting had to be postponed or it wasn't actually even postponed. It was just you can't speak now, Jesse, I'm sorry. Um, but I just wanted to address that fact that that meeting was postponed because it wasn't an official meeting and it just went to the official meeting time so that the newly appointed members could be sworn in. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Right. Any more discussion on boards and commissions? Well, I'd like to make an appointment to the GBA, Jeff Keaton.
To the what? I'm sorry, that was to start.
Jeff Keaton, our former mayor and city councilman, uh, he'd like to serve. I talked him into it to kind of help us out with the GBA, uh, as been on that board.
Do we have an application with his contact information?
I'm sure we have. That was gonna break the rule.
Yeah, no, we, we, we have all of Mr. Keaton's contact.
I, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago and he was uh, uh, ready to go with it, but I, I, I kind of asked him, and he said, yeah, I'll help. So I appreciate everything Mr. Keaton has done for the city over the last few years and uh, even before that, when he was mayor before that, he did a lot.
Uh, can I ask an, uh, what's gonna feel like a really ignorant question? What, what is the GBA? What are you referring to?
Well, General Building Authority, the General Building Authority, the General Building Authority uh, holds property for the city of Hazel Park. The General Building Authority is the technical owner of the Hazel Park Ice Arena. I sit on the General Building Authority as a Serene Pockian, Jim Patterson, our former magistrate, and Mike Mazakelli. Uh, who's retired from the DPW as the citizen representative. Um, Mr. Mazakelli uh, has indicated a desire to uh, no longer serve on that uh, board. So we're gonna thank him for his service and wish him well. He did a great job. Uh, so, yeah, to be the citizen representative on the board now, and I think Jeff Keaton.
I see. So you need a motion. You need somebody to make the motion.
We hold, hold off for one second, please, councilwoman and others. I want to make sure too that I don't know at what point in time that my appointment or Serene's appointment or uh, James Patterson's appointment expires. You may wish to make those reappointments too. I think they are close to expiry or may have already expired until last year to do it the next week. Uh, why don't you do it now? So we know for sure. It's either, I'm pretty sure they need me.
Members that are willing to serve to their positions with GBA.
I'm having an issue with my audio, guys, sorry.
Same.
Okay. Can we get a motion to the
I'm
to procure the
Okay. Can you hear, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I turned off my video because sometimes that helps if you're losing your, um, your audio. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Keaton and then reappoint any current appointees who wish to continue serving whose uh, terms have expired in July or maybe expiring this, this upcoming term. Is that a okay motion? Does that cover us?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any other boards and commission comments?
But there has to be a second. You got a second that. Somebody has a second that.
I like that. Any dissension, discussion? Good, that passed. Any other board and commission comments? Ms. Colbithe, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Tabled items, anything? No. New business, any other new business besides the fact that we're uh, got a freeway all messed up, so.
Is that new? I thought that was like a notion problem that has plagued us since the dawn of time. It's a nightmare.
Well, anyways, let's go down to communications department heads. Chief?
I don't have anything uh, really specific, but uh, I do want to say I'm proud of the men and women at the police department, whether it be command staff, detectives, dispatchers, clerical. They're all committed to keeping the city safe. And I know a lot of police departments have relaxed what they're doing and we have not. We're still working hard. Part of our success at, at uh, being, keeping our crime rates low is because of our citizens that call us. So please, you see something, please call us. I know some people like to message on Facebook, that kind of thing. If it is a crime in progress or something that could be, you don't know what it is. I do ask you to call the station, just that way we're quicker. Um, but the support from all the residents and the business owners in the, in town have been great. Uh, it's been a crappy year, uh, to put up lightly. And we still have the support and we appreciate that. So we're doing everything we can to, keep doing what we can to keep it safe here. Um, with the colder weather, there might not be as, be as many people outside at times. So lock your doors, lock your windows and your cars, that, that kind of thing. A lot of crimes happen because of opportunity, so lock your cars up. Keep your guns locked away. Don't leave them in on my car. Uh, that, I haven't seen that happen recently, so I think uh, people are being good owners of their guns right now. Um, I know that we've gotten a lot of complaints about traffic with the construction. We've put a lot of attention to that. I, I think it's uh, I think the complaints have died down some on that too, so. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well said, Chief. Uh, the morale of the police department is good, since you have you up here?
It's, it's good. We're uh, we've had some low spots, but where I think we're getting better again.
I think the residents of our communities know how to support our police here because uh, to us, good police protection with good common sense with the police and talking to people makes all the difference. And uh, speaking out and letting someone know there's something happening within, within your community is what our community is about. And we appreciate all the support that the police department can give our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We do get food dropped off uh, quite frequently and we enjoy that. Um, letters from kids with drawings and stuff like that. We love it and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Communications from uh, Timothy Young. I see him in the corner on the screen. Gosh, shocked you. Got you after. I want to say thank you for the update on the uh, road sewer issues that you had over on uh, our, was it Max Low?
Sure, yeah, Max Low and what we refer to as the Taco Bell Alley.
Yeah.
Runs north behind uh, the houses on Hughes and Hoover.
Cause I got a couple of calls as soon as that happens. Thank you.
They'll begin, they're supposed to begin their work today, but I think the rain kept them away. So they'll be starting on both those streets supposedly this week, so. And then on the other, on the other note, uh, just because there's been a lot of talk about water bills lately, we have completed a water uh, frequently asked questions. It is on the website. I don't know if anybody can see this, but this is from our our website. So just look under water departments. And on the side, you'll see water uh, and sewer billing frequently asked questions. That'll help curb any uh, buddy that has questions on how their water bills are created uh, and what we do to uh, to get the billings out.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, everybody have a good night.
Please, I'm working, yes. Um, Mr. Finkley? Any other comments about the election you would like to bring up?
Um, I guess I would just like to inform voters right here. Like inform voters um, that ballots are never received by the city more than about forty-five days before an election. That's a common question we have. So in late September, we will receive ballots and we'll begin sending those out. Um, additionally, a lot of people are receiving applications for absentee ballots from third party organizations and from political parties. Um, even if you're already on the permanent list or have already requested a ballot and may continue to receive these, um, anybody can send those out. And the last thing is that the city machine is reimbursing postage on AB return envelopes. So all of your AB return envelopes, the green and white ones will be um, actually postmarked for you. So if you choose to mail it back, there will not be a postage cost for this election.
I have a comment or a question for you. Just for the general public, when we receive a ballot, it's crossed off a list. If you, someone submitted more than two ballots or three, it would not be accepted, correct?
No, um, in fact
Just for the public?
No, um, you're only entitled to one ballot. So like, for instance, we have an entire box full of duplicates. We're receiving really hundreds of duplicates, but every single one of those is checked. So each individual receives their one ballot. You can send in a hundred, but you're only gonna get one ballot.
I just want that out there for the general public to have that security to know that their one vote is one vote.
It's all tracked electronically through a statewide system.
Thank you. Colbithe, I'm sorry. Melissa or Amanda, if you'd like to speak.
Yes, I have something. I wanted to like know that I'll give an updated list of the boards and commissions. And I'll provide a copy to the council members and to the mayor. Um, as well as the ordinances that were passed this evening. I'll go ahead and ensure that all the departments in the court have a copy of those as well.
Thank you. Amanda, any comments? Thank you for the work on the ordinance as well. See, manager, Colbithe?
Jeff, did you have any fingers? No, sorry, question. No, I, I just want to thank, uh, like I said, I thank Melissa, Amanda, and Jeff earlier. We're fortunate that we have uh, employees. Uh, we have a city attorney. We have a, a, an additional part-time city attorney because of the workload that we have in court. And uh, Jeff Campbell is also an attorney and that gives us a lot of capability. So I'm grateful for those folks. They've uh, done a great job. Uh, Melissa has had points on doing all of the reimbursement work for FEMA and for the CARES Act. So she's been in contact with representatives from each of those uh, you know, funding entities. And I think we're still in good shape. Things are going well. She reported today that our uh, applications look to be in good shape and hopefully we will receiving money sooner rather than later from uh, the CARES Act and from FEMA. So I want to thank everybody involved with that. I want to thank the residents of Hazel Park for their patience uh, in dealing with the state road construction project. Like I said, they have said, I say this cautiously because we have absolutely no control over this whatsoever, but they do indicate that their target for opening uh, the bridge is September eleventh. So we hope that uh, target is met. Uh, speaking of September eleventh, we are coming up on the anniversary of uh, that day, which of course has such great significance for the people of this country. I will never forget that day. So I want to take this opportunity to uh, thank all of uh, our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, our EMTs, and all the members of the United States military who placed themselves in danger to protect us. Remember, our freedoms are not free and the people in uniform services who put their lives on the line every day are doing that to uh, protect us. Um, I will simply close by reminding everyone that Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And uh, the coronavirus only exacerbates uh, those difficulties that we have under the stage broken system of municipal finance. And I am hopeful, because I'm hopeful every year, that there will be a legislature that will be uh, elected that will be brave enough and courageous enough and smart enough to be able to tackle some of the solutions that we've requested to fix some of the problems with our municipal finance system. Uh, I want to thank everybody out there for watching. I want to thank uh, all of my wonderful staff. And uh, thank you, Mayor and Council for continuing to employ me.
Thank you.
Phil's woman, Aubrey?
I just want to remind everyone that the DIA Inside Out, um, art exhibits are still up around the city. Uh, we've got art at uh, City Hall. Uh, between City Hall and the library, we have art at Green Acres Park, uh, coloring studio down towards South John R. As well as the Jan Perici Memorial Art Garden. Um, the weather's been pretty nice, so there's still an option uh, for people, sorry, my dogs are barking. Um, still an option uh, to go out for a nice bike ride, go for a nice walk, check out some of the art, learn something new. Um, about some of these great artworks that are out there. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Colbithe? Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Want to thank everybody's hard work, all the staff, administration, everybody on these ordinances and bringing them to us, the emergency ordinances. This is a lot of work to bring to us in a short amount of time. Also, I'd invite uh, people who want to come out and look at the art or on their bicycles, just for a fun ride to the Hazel Park Casual Bike Club, Wednesday nights, seven PM, behind the uh, high school. Uh, we've had a, we had twenty-six people riding with us last week. That was a nice group. They have a good time, weather permitting. And I'll watch out for the kids and if you, you know, in the streets and the bike schools are kind of open again and kids are not on vacation so much, but just watch out for the kids. And if you love somebody, tell them, if you have a kid, hug them and tell them you love them every day. Have a great night. Councilmember, Paul?
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone, uh, cause I, I know I've been receiving messages on Facebook and I'm and I know Alyssa Sullivan, councilwoman, Alyssa Sullivan has as well regarding code uh, enforcement issues with homes and neighbors that there actually is a form, if they so choose on the website to submit something. Uh, if they want to report something, so um, not that you can't continue to reach out to us as well uh, if you don't feel comfortable doing that, but I just wanted to let people know that there actually is a form on the city's website that they can submit for code enforcement. Um, I also wanted to thank the chief and uh, our police department, our fire department for all the hard work that they do. So it is greatly appreciated. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Sullivan.
Um, I want to echo everybody else's uh, gratitude towards the uh, members of our staff. Um, everybody in our city works really hard. We are a small city, but we are mighty. Um, and uh, I really, really appreciate the hard work that they do also. Um, Chief, thank you for your hard work. I know that you've been doing some rewriting of some policy and procedure and I really appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to uh, send my well wishes to our officer. I don't want to um, give out too much of his information, but um, just send some well wishes to one of our officers who is having a difficult time. And um, remind everybody, we are still in quarantine, or it's not in quarantine, but we're still in um, during a pandemic. So please be safe, social distance, wear your masks, wash your hands, um, look out for each other. And um, that's about it.
Thank you. I'd like to say welcome and thank you for coming out to our September eighth city council meeting. It's been very informative. And I'd also like to say to our police and fire department, ditto as well. Uh, you guys do a lot. It's uns, the unsung heroes of our city is our police and fire. And all the staff, which supports us to be able to put this meeting on and also bring all the information to the forefront for our residents. It's a, it's a team effort in our community, more so than other community communities. We have not had the experience, we've had experiences in the past from other councils back years ago. Where there wasn't a team effort on their staff or their, or their force. Am I right, Mr. Colbithe? Remember those days?
Which year would you like me to say?
Eighties, nineties, seventies?
I go back nearly forty years.
Yeah, well, that's why I brought it up. We've all been through these times and, and it's the most, it's the very cohesive uh, city council and now and cohesive uh, administration with the staffing that we have. And I think, I appreciate, I think everybody's working well together and I appreciate everything that's happened. Through the COVID era, we've actually done quite well. We were able to handle any challenges that came up. We got volunteers to help complete. I want to say thank you to all those volunteers that have donated their time and efforts for us in our community. And to stay a little bit more, I just want to uh, speak a little bit about what the council, our former councilman, Selman. Uh, Tom, I saw him last week. He's doing quite well. I just want to bring it up since Mr. Kuro had his comments here at the end. Uh, and uh, I greatly appreciate his comments many, many times, but the councilman Kuro is continuing those comments.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, Helene Zach uh, texted me and said she forgot to mention that there are grants for museums and cultural organizations uh, from the county. Please spread the word. So I'll get with her to see if uh, perhaps there is something that we can use for the historical museum or for the artist council.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn, please. So, okay, maybe not.
Uh, very quickly, small business grant was extended to nine fourteen. Just reminded everybody, uh, information is on the Oakland County website as well. So you can still apply for a small business grant from Oakland County until nine fourteen.
There is money there. Giving away money. If you meet the criteria, they will help you and provide you some assistance. So please check out our newsletter, check out our Facebook page, and check out the county's page. Because sometimes we're not even aware of all of the things that they're able to offer here. So uh, they are trying to spend down this money. So that's a good thing. So we want to make sure these So that's a good thing. So we want to make sure people in Hazel Park have every opportunity to take advantage of that because we know that our businesses and our institutions here have been hit hard by this COVID pandemic. We need to make sure we get our fair share. So, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. The extension is going on. Thank you. Have a good night. Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Also, I apologize for my kitty photo bombing.
Julie, what's their name?
Oh. Push it out.
Yeah, she violated one of the core rules of Zoom. If if a a fur baby comes into the picture, you're obligated to introduce them.